Thank you. Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone, welcome. How's it going? Hi, committee members. Thank you. Hi. Today is Wednesday, November 13th, 2019. It is 6:32 PM and we are here at the John Zahn Community Center at 35 Pleasant Street in Greenfield, Massachusetts. This is the regular November meeting of the Greenfield School Committee. It's the vision of the Greenfield Public Schools that every student has access to an academically rigorous, enriching, and well-rounded education that affords them opportunities to be well-connected scholars and contributing members of the broader society. Thanks to everyone for coming. We did receive a request to move some business items, but before we do that, Secretary Ekstrom, if you could call the roll.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
Here.
Member Nunes.
Here.
Member Karen.
Here.
Member Ekstrom. Member Ward is not present.
And we have Member Glenn Johnson on the phone. Glenn, are you here?
Member Johnson.
Here.
Super.
Thank you.
So, we will do our best to pass Glenn around as needed to ensure that he can hear what's going on. Glenn is not with us today because he is out of state, so that's why he's participating remotely. And, as I mentioned, we did have a request to move business items number one and two ahead of our regular reports. I would like to first start with public comment. So I guess I am asking if the committee would like to move public comment to be first, one and two after that, and then approval of draft minutes and committee reports.
So moved.
Second by Mayor Martin. Okay, yes, Member Hollins.
Do you know if Member Ward is coming tonight?
I am not sure. It was my understanding that he was attending this evening.
Because the number one item is something that's been important to him for a long time, I'd hate to take that up without him here if he's planning to attend.
I agree with you and your concern. I would be willing to amend to have the GHS field trip first to give him a couple more minutes if you prefer. Would you accept that amendment, Member Ekstrom?
Yes.
Mayor Martin, are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. So, all those in favor of moving those items around? I...okay, I believe that was unanimous.
I think with remote participation, all the votes have to be roll call.
Oh, thank you, Member Hollins. I think you might be right about that. Glenn, are you with us? Member Johnson?
I am a here. Yes, I vote for that.
Okay, he votes yes on that. And so, do you want to go ahead with a roll call? Thank you, Secretary Ekstrom. We'll just go back through that vote.
Mayor Martin.
The vote is on to delay.
No, switching stuff around.
With the purpose of doing that, it would be painful to get here.
Mayor Martin, we're just going to repeat our vote by roll call in order to be sure that we're following proper rules of procedure related to member participation remotely.
No.
Okay.
No.
Yes.
Member Nunes?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
I am also a yes.
And Member Johnson is a yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Did you want to vote? We're just moving, okay.
No.
So abstention from Member Ward. Motion carries. We'll move forward. So we'll start with public comment. Are there any members of the public that are here to comment today? Please come on up. When you come to the table, if you could just press the button so the green light is illuminated, and you have three minutes to talk, if you could state your name and address for the record, please. And Member Ekstrom, if you could keep the time.
My name is Susan Voss. I live at 158 Long Plain Road in Greenfield. I am an IA at the Academy of Early Learning, and I am also the Unit C representative. Thank you. I saw two quotes on social media today that struck me as timely and I wanted to share them with you. The first is "Every present moment has future implications." The second, "You cannot keep doing the same thing the same way and keep expecting something different to happen." Today at AEL was another day with multiple absences, no subs, and bare-bones coverage. We had four IAs out, including one vacancy that has not been filled, a teacher vacancy, and our part-time behaviorist who is with us very limited hours each week, anyway. On the 4th of November, we had three IAs out and three teachers out. No subs. Three classes were taught for the entire day by IAs, and each room was short a person. Coverage for recess and lunch, both times where IAs are with our kids, was from the IAs in the half-day classrooms, who last prep time that they usually use to get ready for their afternoon class, and in some cases, they lose their lunchtime. Kids are not always predictable, and some things take longer than they should or than we think they are. All six classrooms at AEL were directly affected by these absences and by the lack of coverage. The present game plan is not working. People working with our kids, good people, are leaving for better-paying jobs with better benefits. Vacancies are not being filled. There are no subs. Our kids deserve better than this. Low pay, lack of trust in administrators, and the absence of respect for the job of IAs will continue this cycle until this contract is ratified by the school committee and the city council. Please ratify this contract. You cannot keep doing the same thing the same way and keep expecting something different to happen. Please help us make these schools what they can and serve our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our first item, the GPS Athletics Program and Special Recognition.
So I'm going to invite our Athletic Director, Mike Kacheski, to come forward. In this offer to have some special recognition, we wanted to celebrate some of the amazing things happening in the Athletics Department. So I'm actually going to start by saying there's one coach here tonight out of many that we'd like to acknowledge. And when you think about some of the challenges that school districts across the country face in retaining people, I think what you maybe don't realize is that we have coaches that have been in with our district for 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, 40 years, 50 years. And I'm going to ask our Athletic Director to say a few words. I'm also going to ask Coach Sukchnik to come forward, and then we're going to move into talking about our students, who are the real stars tonight.
Well, thank you very much. It is an honor and a privilege to be able to represent the Greenfield Athletic Department. Coach Sukchnik has been with the Greenfield Public Schools for 48 years. He didn't think he was going to get up here. But he was my baseball coach in high school, somebody that epitomizes what I wanted to do as a student, as a coach. He is what Greenfield is all about. Everybody says to me, "When is Coach Sukchnik going to be leaving?" And he says, "He loves the game. He's going to stay until we see him driving around in his golf cart, running, just going around in circles, and then that's where he's going to pass, is right onto the dime." But he epitomizes what Greenfield Public Schools and athletics is all about, and we're very, very lucky to have him, and I hope to have him as long, I hope to be able to be in the coaching position as long as he has. I thank him for everything that he's done for me as a player, as a student, and as an Athletic Director, as he was once an Athletic Director also. Thanks, Suk.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank you for this recognition, also two guys that aren't here tonight that have actually coached longer than I. As, I'll just mention them, Pete Conway and Al Dean. I've had the pleasure to coach with Al with football and a few other sports, and Pete is a track cross-country guy, but he's been around. I don't know how long.
Fifty-five years.
Fifty-five.
And I'll also say that Coach Dean, who has been on the football staff for 40, or 50 years, he was my middle school coach, my freshman coach, my JV football coach, and then varsity coach when I was a player, and now I get to be his boss, which I'm really not, really not his boss. But he has been a Greenfield educator, a coach, as I said, for 50 years. He couldn't be with us tonight, but Pete Conway wanted to come tonight. He's been in Greenfield Public Schools for 55 years. As his text said, and Coach Sukshit doesn't text, but Coach Conway does, who's 85 years old, said that "I'm polishing up my dancing shoes and heading to West Springfield to get my dance on." So he couldn't be here tonight, but he's full of a lot of vinegar, and we love having these guys on staff because they remember, we remember where we came from, and we're trying to instill that into our student athletes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd now like to ask our student athletes to come forward. I think we all could recognize and really congratulate an amazing season, the Greenway of girls, field hockey team, I'd like to start with. I was at your game Saturday night. I know I was cold, and so I can't only imagine. You all were running and running hard, but I fell for you. You know, I wanted to throw a blanket out there. You were doing a great job, and you had a great season, and we're so proud of everything that you've done. I think I counted 13 players on our team to maybe 23 on the other team, and holding it tied into double overtime. You're a heck of a team. You're great athletes, and thanks for all that you've done. Congratulations.
So I just wanted to mention who those people are here. Aaron Thayer's the head coach. Come on up, Aaron. And we have Junior Katie Hazelton, Junior Amber Taylor, Junior Jenna Elwell, sophomore Matty Kacheski, and freshman Lily Kakamire.
Nobody wants to say anything? How do we do a selfie? I'm learning how to do Twitter. Hold on.
Dangerous.
Do you want a job? Hold on. Hold on. Right here. Hold on. Ready?
That's your thumb.
That was my thumb. Aaron, you want to say anything? Kate, come on up.
First time ever a Twitter shot?
I'd just like to thank the community. It's pretty awesome looking up in the stands and seeing so many familiar faces cheering us on. I'd like to thank my team. It's pretty awesome when we lose five amazing athletes and we're still at the Western Mass Finals. I'd also like to thank my coach for putting all the dedication and time into us. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Yeah, it was an amazing season for those girls. They weren't expected to be where they were, and they, with hard work, they got it, and I wish them the best of luck the rest of the year. Thank you. And all the other sports they do. Next is our girl soccer coach, Tina Riddell. Come on up, Tina. Coach Riddell came with us two years ago, this is her second year, and brought us to the tournament for the first time since '92, I believe it was, last year. And then this year, she won a league championship, so I think that's pretty good accolades for Tina. None of the girls could make it because they're all studying, because they've got a GPA that's pretty high. Not to take away from you girls at all. I can say that because my daughter's one of them, so I understand where it's coming from, but Tina, I wish, congratulate you and have a safe.
I like these guys. I'm proud to coach at Greenfield. My niece and nephew go to school here. It's been rewarding to see the girls excel and not go into a game saying, "Oh, we're going to lose 17 to nothing." And that's what we started off with last year, was an 11-nothing loss, and I was like, "Hmm, how are we going to change that?" And we won, and then this year, they were excited about winning, and they're more excited about getting a banner.
Yes.
For the gym. So, I appreciate it, and I thank you for your support if you came to any of our games. I thank you, Cameron, because I know that you came to our games. And I thanks Coach Kate for hiring me.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So just quickly, congratulations. I am a soccer player myself, so I'm so pumped about Greenfield Soccer and beyond. Field hockey, yes. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and also, special thanks to our coaches for all the work that you do. When I heard about having so many coaches that have been with us for so long, I was just floored, and so I am very, it's just really exciting. Mayor Martin specifically requested to have a moment.
I'd just like to say that the entire Athletics Department and all the sports are doing a great job, and that's the history of Greenfield sports. For the field hockey group, you've carried it on from almost, we're going on at least two and a half decades, maybe, of high, excellent play, caliber of play, it's super, the finals, quarterfinals, semifinals, state finals, we've been there, and we've produced great athletes out of the field hockey. Soccer is beginning their new tradition, and that's really something to look forward to. This whole new, younger group coming up, playing different sports now, that's very good. Greenfield is proud of all the banners that hang and the many more banners that will come to hang. Just on Coach Tom Sukchnik, I'd like to say that I've known Tom for a very long time. He's been, he's been a fixture of sorts, either on the mound, on the field, or in the box, or in the vets' field house. He's taken care of vets' field and our young athletes going through a number of different teams over the years, the many years. He's not only recognized for his great effort and time that he's given to the city of Greenfield and the Greenfield High School Public Sports Program, but he's recognized on a regional basis, and I think Coach Kutch, you can mention that, his New England recognition, that would be very knowledgeable for everyone in the house to understand that the excellence of our athletic coaches and teams go beyond the city and go across the land.
Piggybacking on what Mayor Martin's talking about, Coach Sukchnik was a New England coach, player, Coach of the Year. I don't remember the date, Tom, but sorry, but he's also inducted into the Massachusetts Baseball Hall of Fame.
I keep hearing, in addition to the wonderful playing while in high school, I keep hearing about Greenfield students who play at the college level and even coach at some top colleges professionally. And I think there's a lot, not only that goes into high school playing, but it's impressive how many people keep playing and then coach professionally afterwards, and it starts here, really, so.
Member Ward.
There's enough people here to correct me if I'm wrong, but it was Doten, who's just named. Kelly Doten, 90, early 90s graduate, just named ACC Coach of the Year. Field hockey, Field Hockey Coach of the Year. Atlantic Coast Conference, that's no joke. Boston College, Field Hockey Coach. We also have Tara Jelli, Stanford University. Yeah. And that was, she was also early 90s.
Eighty-nine, wasn't it?
Eighty-nine. Well, I tried to give her a couple years.
There's a lot out there. There's a lot out there that are representing the Greenway Nation right now, and we could use a whole meeting, and with a little research, we could probably put that all out there. But there's a lot of people in this nation that do care about Greenfield Athletics, so you wouldn't believe some of the stuff that I get. All photos and things from the 50s, and pitchers, and of teachers that played, and things like that. It's really neat to feel, to be part of it. And I'm a huge historian when it comes to stuff like that. My kids just roll their eyes when I bring out stuff. "Hey, you got to look at this film from 1962." And I go, "Oh, boy, Dad, here we go again." But that's, I think that's where we were made. I think each and every one of us have something that we grew up with, that we still hold a piece of us, and Greenfield will always be a part of us. And I tell that to the kids every day, that they're always going to be a part of you, so. That's it.
I just want to say one other word. We've commended our student athletes and our coaches that make this possible. The school committee, of course, chooses to fund our athletics budget, and we've maintained no fees for athletics, even while area sports teams in the Franklin County and around us have collapsed teams or not been able to maintain their athletics. So the fact that our athletics has stayed strong and continued to grow, and that students can look forward, this is about years of anticipation, knowing, "When I get to that, you know, when I'm in eighth grade, I'm going to be playing," and looking forward, it's really incredible. I also don't want to forget the parents. In the bleachers on Saturday night, there was a lot of cold but fired-up parents, and they care so much about you, and they are working their butts off, too, and they're getting you to practice, and they're making sure you do your homework after, and they're really a backbone of our athletics, so I just want to thank them, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments at this point? We do have in our packet more detailed financial information. This was also requested to come forward and discuss. Would you like, how would you like to proceed with that? Did you want to, Mike, did you want to?
Good to go.
You're good to go. All right. I see Member Hollins' hand, if you want to go ahead.
Yeah. Could you tell us, just at the start, the number of teams, the number of sports we offer? And I'm a fan of Title IX, but I remember when there was 10% female sports and 90% male sports, so I'm proud that we have equal male and female sports. I don't know, may not be politically correct, but that we have equality supporting athletes. But I think a place to start is what sports do we offer, and at what grade can students participate? Do we have feeder teams at the middle school level?
There's a couple questions that I can answer right there. For the most part, our teams are seventh through 12. We have seventh and eighth grade teams, we have ninth through 12 teams, or eighth through 12 teams now, since we have the eighth grade up. All the numbers that we are producing on teams depends on how many kids are on those teams. For example, I'll use basketball as a good example. We don't have a lot of girls' basketball programs, even, kids in our program, even though we are a successful program, so we have to utilize sixth and seventh graders for our middle school program, and we have to utilize the eighth graders into our JV and varsity program. Whereas on the boys' side, we have a plethora of eighth through 12, or ninth through 12 graders to be able to fund our JV and varsity, and we use the seventh and eighth grade as our middle school teams. I feel, it's a personal feeling that I'd rather have our middle schoolers be seventh and eighth grader competitive factors. I don't feel it's very safe for some sixth graders in a boys' sport especially to be able to be playing against eighth graders, which our other teams are playing, so that's one of the reasons why we do it, but it's also a numbers game, on the girls' side especially. We do that same thing in soccer. We do have sixth graders play soccer, boys and girls, because of numbers, we don't have low, we have low numbers at the boys' soccer at the high school level, eighth through 12. But we do move them around to be able to try to be competitive. You know, we don't, it's not a recreation program, we don't want to treat it as a recreation program, we want to be a competitive program, try to make our higher levels better. I think that's, anything more?
The different teams we have, I'm not as clear on what we offer at middle school.
So, middle school programs, we have middle school football, middle school soccers, boys and girls. We have basketball programs and baseball and softball programs. We do sometimes, for field hockey, we have an MIA waiver that we are allowed to bring seventh graders up to play in a JV only. Again, that's a numbers thing. And with the MIA, if they're not in your school, you have to ask for a waiver for the PBIC, then goes and thrown to the MIA ERB Board, and ask for, we have to have certain numbers that allows our middle school seventh graders to be able to participate in JV programs only. We also have a middle school field hockey program that's just sixth and seventh graders. This year, we allowed seventh graders to make the choice if they wanted to play JV or they wanted to play middle school, and we had, I wanted to say, we had about 15 sixth and seventh graders that played on a middle school, first time ever playing middle school field hockey, and from what I've been told, it was quite a success, so I'm talking to the coach. We had a great coach in Katie Hop, who came in, she's got a really good field hockey background, just to kind of create the camaraderie, to get them to understand the game, to make our programs better down the road. So, yeah, it's very confusing, because I can see your face. It is, on my end, I have to keep track of numbers and be able to present this to 47 ADs in the PBIC, and the paperwork. Sometimes you might get the paperwork because I have to submit it to the school committee. I know I send co-ops and middle school waiver forms to Adrian, and just to show that we are going for middle school waivers, and they're the only ones we do it for, is field hockey. We don't ask seventh graders to come up with anything else unless there is a need to be able to supplement our JV programs.
Can I just reiterate what I think you said about the middle school teams? I just want to clarify what I think you said on the middle school teams. We offer football, basketball, baseball, softball, and field hockey. Did I miss something?
Hold on.
Soccer, did I miss soccer?
Did you miss soccer? Well, I have it all right here, that packet that I gave you, I have it all break down to middle school sports. So, football, field hockey, soccer, boys and girls, basketball, boys and girls, baseball and softball.
Thank you. And sometimes you pull up sixth graders, and sometimes you get a waiver for a seventh grader. Okay.
Sometime you can come and sit down and go through all the paperwork if you want with me.
The middle school's on the third page of that.
It's on that, that budget Excel spreadsheet.
Member Ward, this was an item that you wanted to bring to the table, is, did you have any specific questions?
No, not specifically, but I think that you'll see from looking, looking at what we're doing with athletics, that as with most of our, our programs, it's, you know, we make the most with, with what we're, what we're given. And, you know, I would be one of the strongest advocates for continuing to fund athletic programs. I don't know how we've been able to do it. When I was in school, it was 100 bucks a kid per sport. And how we're able to do it, and you look at other schools that are not, and I can't stress that enough, you're not going to have a Thanksgiving Day football game, right, Coach?
Yeah, that's correct.
That is, the Turner's Falls program is, is football program no longer. How long? 100 years?
Ninety-two years.
Ninety-two years. That's, I mean, it's sad. I get a little choked up thinking about it. I feel terrible for all of the kids. The kids from Turner's that, that were able to continue playing football or continue to play cooperatively with Mohawk, but, yeah. There was, the Pioneer Field Hockey Program, varsity program, went away. How long ago? Was that a year ago?
I didn't hear what you said. I'm sorry.
Pioneer Field Hockey, varsity field hockey.
Yeah, they dropped it last year, played JV only, and they're back to varsity this year.
Yeah. I mean, we're, how we're able to do it with, with the funding that we have, it's...
Creative, and it's, and what is... Creative, and it's, and, and what is, it's been done by coaches fundraising, doing fundraising for their own uniforms. It's been paranormal organizations kicking in, doing certain things that some, some sports can't do. I mean, some teams can't, you know, get the, the little things. What we have been able to do with what has been budgeted is do some creative budgeting. You know, what's needed right away. Things that you need to be able to play the game, not the extra, extra stuff. And our coaches that have, that, that are with our staffs have been around long enough to understand what needs to be done and understand the fact that what we're working, working with are all tight-knit community members and understand what we're trying to do. So, we, they appreciate what, what is given, but they also appreciate what they have. And they take care of what they have and year in and year out, never complain, get what they need. And, you know, supplemented by other sources as being paranormal organizations. And I'm not a big fundraising guy, I can't stand it, but sometimes there's a need. And we, we appreciate the community support in that respect.
Greenfield Education Foundation has also been a contributor, athletics.
Alumni Association also.
Alumni Association, for sure.
Alumni, Alumni Association bought the scoreboard, that's in the back fields, on the new fields. They've been great to us and, and the Education Foundation, we have, we quested in for different things over the years, track uniforms and stuff like that. So, we also have, giving FYI, FYI, that we have an MOU with the Greenfield Fire Department that I created with Chief Strand this year to save on our EMT costs. The private company, AMR, was, was raking us over the coals a little bit and, and charging us upwards of a hundred and fifty dollars for an EMT at games. And I've got an MOU with the Fire Department that charges only a hundred dollars a game. And we have local people working it that care about it. We also have Pioneer Valley Spine and Sport. Jamie Coffin, who is offering his time with the football and field, football and hockey programs this year and last year at, at a cost too. So, it also helps our student athletes, because these people who also live in the community, also physical therapists. So if a child, a child has an injury or something that they might want to take care of, they can go and talk to these people. And it's a safety thing. And we're really happy to have people like that on board. Tina's an EMT also, having an EMT at a soccer game. Those are the people we try to hire to be able to help our student athletes, so. If we're gonna, are we gonna ask anything else? Because I do need to just want to stress one thing about next year's budget, and I think it's on everybody's radar, is transportation. And I have talked with Ed Vudrin. Recently, we have a meeting next week. But our transportation costs are through the roof for the first two months. So, we've got to come up with some creative budgeting with this. They went thirty percent over what we paid last year. And so, just to give you a heads up, that Ed Vudrin and myself and Jake are gonna meet next week to try to start using some of our, our own school buses. But I, I, again, I'm just a dumb football coach. I'm not a big mu, budget guy, not a big numbers guy. But I could see down the road that we're gonna overspend if we stay doing the course of what we're doing on, on transportation. So, I just wanted to give you FYI on that. And you could see on the, the spreadsheets that I created of the different things that are, that are going up. The transportation is upwards to four hundred and seventy-five dollars an average trip. And that's just going to Turner's. It's not like we're going to Islam Meadow. We went to Lee, golf team went to Lee for a tournament, a state tournament, and it cost eight hundred and seventy-five dollars for seven kids to go up there. And that's, that's just outrageous. They've been very good to us, they've always given us what we've needed over there, but they're really raking us under the coals. Also, our game officials, numbers are going up ten percent. Cost, the MIA has, has, and I'm on the game officials board, and sorry, but we got like a ten percent raise for the game officials. But it, it, over the course of time, the amount of officials that we use, it does add up in that respect. Contracted services might be a little bit. And most of our budget that we've, we've come from is from the revolving account. And our revolving account is going to take a hit this year, because we have no games in November. And the ticket sales is all about revolving account. And that's where all our funding comes from. Losing the Turkey Day game, that's about a three thousand dollar hit. I mean, it's, it sounds like small peanuts, but that's, that's uniforms for the track team or the uniforms for the soccer team or something like that. So, for, for us, that, that is a, that's a pretty big hit. But I just wanted to make you aware of those things. And on that, the, the explosive, Excel spreadsheet is what I project what's gonna be costing for twenty twenty-one, next year.
Thank you. And I saw Member Ward, did you want to say something?
Yeah, more, more so just to open up a dialogue here with the school committee to, to, it's nice to know that we have student athletes. It was something that was a big part of my education. There's, as a school committee member, a lot of, I get a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, as I'm sure you know. And there's a lot of misinformation out there. And I think that it would have been a good idea to, to get this in the open, so that it can be looked at, we can talk about it. We hopefully recognize how many, how many people are involved, how important it is to them. And that we continue to support this and take, you know, take a good look at the numbers and see how we can help Coach Athletic Director and Coach Kachewski and, and the rest of the Green Wave Athletics.
Yes, Member Eksham.
I just want to make sure that we're closing the loop on this. And I follow up, I think, Cam, you probably already answered. But part of the reason that this came up is that you had heard that we weren't funding hockey and you were concerned about the, some of the coaches' salaries. Is, is this answering your question?
This is and is not answering my question. This is, again, to open up a dialogue. Yes, part of what the, the misinformation is, is, you know, that there are coaches that are, they're paid out of this. And then there are transportation budgets and, you know, how, how these programs raise their money and asking for donations, businesses to, to help fund the sports. It's, you know, you hear things and, and you want to check it out. So you go to the coach and you ask, or you go to the Athletic Director and you ask to see. So, no, it hasn't answered all of my questions, but it is, it is a start.
Any answer on the hockey? Because I have the hockey. So, as you know, we are a seventeen co-op with the area schools in Franklin County. We supplement buses, contracted services, and coaching salary, one coaching salary. The ice time that is raised by the, the parents. The parents raise twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars for ice time. That is not on the dime of Greenfield Public Schools. The only thing that's on Greenfield Public Schools is buses, contracted services, EMT, EMT's part of that. And any equipment, they get a case of pucks. That's it. Most of, and then everything else is raised. This year, I, for the first time, I gave invoices to the seven schools for three hundred dollars. They're all receptive to it. I've talked to Steve about it. The money's coming in from the seven schools at three hundred dollars to supplement another coach. So there's other schools are gonna pay for a second coach, because we've gotten upwards to thirty kids, thirty-five kids, and it's not safe. We've always run that program with one paid coach, the head coach, and then three or four assistants that are volunteers. What they do, they don't get paid by anybody that's from Greenfield Public Schools. They might get a gift certificate from a parent's organization or something like that, because legally they cannot get money. The coach can legally give them some of their money, but the parent organization cannot give them cash. I know that they have been given gift cards. I was a volunteer coach in Florida and I got a hundred and fifty dollar gift card to Publix. Best present I ever got. And some of these, and, and again, we as coaches are not doing it for the money. If you look at the coaches' salaries that we have, I made seventeen cents an hour this year of all the work and dedication that our coaches put into it. So we're not doing it for anything but the love of the game, the love of the student athletes. And, and that's honest truth coming from my heart. So, any other hockey questions I answer, I can answer. I mean, it's very confusing with the seventeen co-op. I understand that. It's Franklin County, it's molded after the Franklin County Hockey Association. We finally all got together, why are we struggling with numbers? Well, because all these teams that are playing since they're five, six years old, they're playing through up to the high school years when it comes to ninth grade, and then they split. So those programs pretty much died. Greenfield started going down, Turner's Falls started going down. We got together, we got Smith Academy kids, Mahar and Athol, the first co-op, and it started flourishing. We started having some varsity programs that were pretty successful. So, to make a long story short, we're at a spot right now with hockey that is thriving. We have all the kids, the younger kids, that the FCHA is thriving, because they see what we've done at the high school level. And our high school kids are starting to get excited about it, and they've played together for the last ten years, so why not do this? Turning the page a little bit, it might be happening in the fall next year also. So, that's something that we're starting to talk about already. But I hope I answered any hockey. Feel free and ask me anything you want, because even if I don't know, I'll make something up and tell you. No, I'm kidding.
Member Eksham.
Yeah, so my niece played hockey in college and high school and all of those kinds of things. And just, I, to sort of reassure people or, or, because I don't want to say, I don't, I don't want us to feel like we're shirking our duty. Hockey is really expensive. And there are not a whole lot of schools that fully fund their hockey teams, because ice is expensive, equipment is expensive, travel all over the world is expensive. And so, I think, an unfortunate downside to, to having a great hockey team and having great hockey programs is expensive. And families have to swallow a lot of that. And it's a lot of long hours for families and coaches and everybody. And so, I, I, I don't think you all are running anything out, out of the ordinary of what a lot of other hockey programs see, at this age, at least.
To answer that, the, we do have programs that, for kids who want to try hockey, and they do it at the FCHA level very well. But even at the high school, last year, we had a kid that had nothing, wanted to play hockey. We found him equipment, just all he did was skate around a couple of times and they bought him into on the team. You know, so we have players that have no idea how to play the game, but they want to try it. So we just, and Coach Bouchard is phenomenal with that. He just brings kids in, he'll have sixty people on the ice, he doesn't care, just as long as they're out having a good time. And we do have kids like that on there. And that we do have opportunities for the unprivileged. All girls are playing hockey too, we have girls that are playing hockey, we have a co-ed team right now. There could be a possible co-op in the next three years with the girls' team out of Amherst. So we're trying to get everybody involved and trying to promote the sports, because we all know reutilization's right around the corner. I don't want to talk about that right now, because I know that's a big thing on everybody's plate. But it's happening in athletics everywhere. And it's not only happening with us, it's happening in Florida, it's happening in Georgia. People that I have talked to, coaches that I've worked with in Florida, their programs have gone from a hundred and thirty people to seventy. So it's not an only Greenfield, Franklin County, Massachusetts thing, it is a national thing. So I think the biggest thing that we've got to fix is what we've got going on here. And we're figuring that maybe bringing some communities together and, and doing it athletically. And it might be the way to save a lot of different athletics.
Yes, Superintendent.
I just want to make one final comment about our, our students, our players, and the ethics of our athletics department, kind of in closing. When you think about the league champs in the soccer team or teams like our field hockey team making it to the finals again. These, these teams are playing together. And I think when you watch a game, part of what's fun about it is how well our teams work together. And it's not just these teams. Our teams, our students work really well together. And that speaks to what's important about athletics in Greenfield. And I think it's, everybody should feel really good about, obviously, that's the coaches and the families and the kids. But it's also because the program cares about kids not just winning a goal, scoring another touchdown, but actually being good people and, and doing that on the field and off the field. And that is just so clear, and it makes me very proud. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'm gonna check in quickly with Member Johnson. Member Johnson, did you want to make any comments before we wrap up?
He's sleeping.
Are you there?
Hello. I put myself on mute. I, I just appreciation for everyone who's working so hard and, yeah, just echoing the thoughts that this is an important part of, of learning and learning teamwork and leadership. And so I, I just appreciate all the, everyone involved in the community who's helped to make the athletic program so successful.
Thank you. Any closing comments over here?
I echo all the appreciations. I'd just like to ask a question, which maybe, I don't even know if you can answer, about the budget overview that we have. I'm very appreciative that the budget overview shows the actual expenses we had, which is different than what we budgeted. For FY eighteen, the athletic program was two hundred and twenty-eight thousand. And the actual expenditures for two, two eighteen nineteen, which was last year, which is different than what we budget sometimes, was two hundred and thirty thousand. And our budget this year is two hundred and eleven thousand. So, our budget is, I don't know, eighteen thousand, nineteen thousand less than our actual expenses the last two years. And I was just looking through this, I was gonna ask a question about the referees, the EMTs. And if you're saying that our transportation expenses, well, I'll just go on. I noticed that the referee expenses at the high school are up three thousand from what our actual was last year. And our transportation is down, you know, nine or ten thousand from what our actual was last year. And the supplies are down about thirty-five hundred. So I was thinking, gee, you're saying that our transportation is going to be more and we're already budgeted eight thousand, less than it was last year. So, looking at our actuals, I'll round it off, so it's about two hundred and thirty thousand is what we've actually spent. And our budget this year is two eleven. So it looks like without even the transportation, we might be short unless there's something different about this year than the other year's fewer teams or.
Well, no, there's nothing different than what's been in the past. What, what opened my eyes to it is when I've got the first two months of transportation at thirty thousand dollars and we've already spent half our budget for two months, is when I went, wow, what are we gonna do? So that made me start looking at it a little bit more. What, the game officials that I have on here, this is for the twenty twenty-one, that's what's gonna be for the cost. And I estimated the same amount for, for transportation for twenty twenty-one. So, I didn't realize that it was going to be thirty percent more than it was last year at the time of the, until I got the bill. So I was like, wow, what am I gonna do, what are we gonna do? So that's why I started contacting Ed, saying, help.
You're sounding like a school superintendent.
I don't want to be a school.
Because all, all the, all the costs going up and your transportation.
And so, the, I, I can't honestly answer how that's gonna go about. I mean, I mean, I, I.
So we have to keep our eye on that, because it looks like we can anticipate a twenty or twenty-five thousand dollar shortage.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, thank you.
I'm working to try to get it down by talking to our transportation people, to be able to utilize buses in the wintertime, probably for about forty percent less.
Thank you, Mike, for all your work.
Okay.
I'll just add, I met with our transportation coordinator on this matter today. And we're supportive of trying to find ways that we can continue to support athletics. We were talking about cheerleaders have a number of occasions that they're coming up that we need to transport a number of students to participate in athletic events. And the more opportunities that we have to use in-house transportation, the more cost-effective it is. So, the increases that you're hearing about, working with our bus vendors and Kuzmeskis, can really surprise somebody. The numbers you're looking at are the FY twenty budget that was just voted by this committee. So there's nothing surprising in front of you in terms of the information that was presented by our Athletic Director tonight. But I, I do support the efforts that we're taking to try to make those dollars go to kids actually playing. You will be hearing again soon from Ed Vudrin, talking about how do we expand exactly these types of opportunities for students and making investments in our fleet every time we've done that. And he's come before this committee and said, if I have this many vehicles, I can do this much. Every time we've done that. Every time we've done that, we've been able to move more kids around to activities and events that are meaningful to them, and really end up saving money doing it. So you'll be hearing from him again soon to try to make more of these possible.
Okay, quick.
I'm sorry, I just have one last question. It has to do with transportation. When you are moving a team, what's the range in the size of the team members that are going?
Which, which team?
Well, I'm just saying from the smallest team, like golf is seven.
Football's 30, well, it was 30 at one time. Baseball's 30. I would say 30 is a good team sport, individual sport's going to be 10 to 12, basketball's going to be a little less, but again, buses that we need sometimes leave before 4:30, especially in the fall and the spring, not necessarily in the wintertime. And with transportation that's going through Greenfield Public Schools, their buses aren't available till after 4:30, because the limited amount of buses that they have, they have to transfer our school students first, which is understandable. But we have a plethora of, of events in the wintertime that will be leaving after 4:30. Our basketball programs travel local, more so than our hockey team, which is traveling to Springfield, Westfield sometimes, and the baseball team is local, softball team is local, football is not as much as it once was, oh, you know what it is, football is. Volleyball is local, so I mean, I guess that all put into why my eyes are wide, opened up, because our teams are traveling the same amount of spots, but we're spending $10,000 more. So, that's how I kind of opened it up a little bit. And also, our league, like, our league place, every two years, we might be placed in a different league, which we're going to have to travel, like our girls' basketball program has to travel a little bit more this year because they're placed in a different league. Field hockey, we got placed into a bigger league, the top league, we have to go to Longmeadow, Minichaug, Agawam, West Springfield, Westfield, and that costs a lot more. Well, and you're good, though, you have to travel and play the best, so that's why we do what we do.
So I, I do want to wrap up. I saw Mayor Martin and I saw Member Ekstrom, so let's go right ahead, Mayor Martin.
Mike, the, on your front sheet, you've got the fiscal year '20, and it shows revenue at $2,295. It's on the bottom chart.
I don't know, which one are you looking at, sir?
Front page, bottom chart.
Yeah, okay.
So, the, if you included the November game revenue, which was about $3,000, that would only bring it up to five, the $3,000 that we lost. So, I'm wondering, every other year it's been around $20,000, $22,000, how, what happened that the revenue dropped so much?
So, I do have last year's revolving account here, just, it was for informational, for me to be able to see. Without the November, the November games last year, we made $4,000. November games this year will be zero, because we have none. In the first two months of September, October, we brought in $5,400 this year. So, we're, we're ahead of what we were last year, but we're behind because we have no November ticket take.
Right, so I'm, I'm showing $2200, $2295, not $5,400, so is that the revenue to date, or that's...
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't look at that, I don't know what that means. That's, this is all Steve stuff, this is not, this is big guy stuff, not my stuff. Yeah, Steve? Thanks, buddy.
That's as of last month, that statement, so the, some of the revenues are lagging in, but that, that $2,000 represents FY '20 as of last month.
That's September's 20, $2295, and I have deposits since October, and that's 3135 is October's.
So we, you got revenue expected.
Yes.
Going through June 30th. So you also have expenses going through June 30th, and you have encumbrances of $1,066, so shouldn't the encumbrances be a lot more if we're going to continue to use transportation during the next seven months?
Oh, that, that's just the revolving account, transportation would come out of the above, where it says athletic transportation, and encumbered for $60,000.
Okay, so your transportation is in the chart above it?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
And Member Ekstrom?
Thanks, Steve. I can't help but look at this and think about when we were going through budgets and constantly being told by the mayor, as was given his large view of the city, constantly telling us to cut our budgets. So now I'm looking at this, and as I sat in those meetings, I thought, you know what? Everything costs what it costs. If something costs $10, you don't get to negotiate it, down to five. And so, Coach, that you would have $60,000 here, or Steve, whichever one of you, I would absolutely expect that, because you were constantly told that you had to cut something. Reality is, it's going to cost more than that, and that's not about you, that's not about anything, that's about us being, not being, looking to the long term and being shortsighted and wanting to get to a number that wasn't accurate.
Point of privilege.
Member Ekstrom has the floor.
And even I can tell you that's not going to be enough, and I haven't spent all kinds of time, but I know how much it costs for transportation, and I know how much it costs for a number of other things. I wouldn't look at this and think that would be enough. Again, not to, not to underscore any of the work that's being done, and yet, we look at it and say, oh no, that's too much, or maybe it was $68,000, and went, oh no, that's too much, you have to cut it. Well, we can cut all kinds of stuff, but it's still going to cost what it costs. And so that's what frustrates me about a lot of budget-related issues, and this is, of course, one of them.
Point of privilege. Member Ekstrom mentioned my name, I'd like to respond. Member Ekstrom, I think the, when the Budget Subcommittee met, you were there occasionally, the issue was always trying to find an efficient budget. I don't recall ever saying that we've got to cut, I've recalled examining every line item as we went through the conversation. When we've had a full board discussing it in public, it's been very superficial, and there's been hardly any detailed discussion on the budget. So I would say that the School Committee approved a 20, a little over $20 million budget, and the City Council didn't approve that. I presented an $18,700,000 budget, and the City Council took $700,000 from the city to add for the school budget. So even among all of the dozens of people that review the budget, this is the budget we have, $19,301,080. That's the school budget. Tonight, we're going to discuss the recommendation to add $400,000, which we've already done from a couple of accounts from our last meeting.
We're going to wrap up this topic now.
Yeah, I'd like to wrap it up, so...
We're definitely going off topic.
Pointing into the mayor's cutting philosophy is a bunch of BS.
All right, all right, Bill. Thank you, everyone. I do want to bring us back home to the point of pride here. This is amazing. I am so proud of Greenfield Public Schools. I am really proud that we prioritize student activities, not only student athletics, but beyond that, and student, and engagement in the arts and electives. This is very important, this is something that I am just proud of. Two are winning teams, congratulations. To those that may not have had quite successful games this season, it's okay. And thank you again for bringing all of this detail. I appreciated having this conversation, and I'm sure we may see you again soon, come budget season, which is just around the corner.
Feel free at any time to contact me directly if you have any questions. I greatly work hard, and I appreciate all the efforts that you put in in supporting us, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Coach.
So we'll move on to our second item, field trip. All right, so we have a field trip to Spain, and there's information in our packets. Superintendent, would you like to introduce?
Sure, this is a field trip that is scheduled to take place over the April vacation. You're going to hear tonight about some of the planned, the itinerary you have in your packet, the, some of the highlights of where they're going throughout their trip in Spain, and you can see that all of the different criteria on the School Committee policy for planning this type of trip have been reviewed and met, and Ms. Cloutier has gone through those and has reviewed those with myself and with the high school principal. There are still some date changes possible, because the, the tour company will not finalize those exact dates until January, but the request always has to come before the committee, before the commitment can be made to the tour company, and then the final dates will be given. So, the minimum number of dates that, days that will be missed from school are maybe one or two, and the upper end of that will be three days from school missed in addition to the April vacation, but really, every consideration has been taken, so that students are in school as much as possible and taking advantage of this trip. And the chaperone ratio is important, because we want to make sure that students are well chaperoned and supervised on the trip. I think Ms. Cloutier and Ms. Fitzgerald are planning to attend at this point, and so I think you have 10, 10 students total, which would be a 1 to 5 ratio, or maybe eight now, with maybe one to two more coming.
Yes.
So, 1 to 5 ratio, and Ms. Cloutier is here to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you, Ms. Cloutier, for coming, and thanks for your patience with the First Agenda item. Did you want to add anything to that before we open up the floor?
I think the Superintendent summed it up well, you have the paperwork in front of you, this is EF Tours, it's the company that I've been traveling with since 1996. I trust them, they have not done me any disservice in any of their tours, and I'm open to any questions, I suppose.
Okay, so let's start with a motion. I'll entertain a motion to approve the field trip to Spain from April 15th to April 26, 2020. Moved by Member Ward, is there a second? Second by Member Karen. Member Ward, did you want to speak to anything before? I think Member Karen wants to say something.
I, I would just say that I, I know that Mrs. Cloutier's been doing this for a long time, my daughter has been on the trip with the group, and I think it's fantastic, I wish I had taken advantage of it when I was a kid, or I probably, I should have when, when she went, but I, I think she forbid it.
Maybe your daughter did.
Yeah, my daughter did, yeah.
Member Karen?
I just had a quick question, because you used the date specifically in your motion, should we remove the dates?
Oh, is there...
That could possibly change?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, maybe I could address that. So, we, what happens is, is the tour company buys the plane tickets, they can't buy the plane tickets until we have approval, and so, they make us give a date range with a two-day window on each end, just to look for the most economical plane tickets, really.
And does the date range, the 15th to the 26th, does that support your needs? If not, we can change it to an April...
I think it's safe to say April vacation with the idea that there may be a day or two at each end, is just a safe way to say.
Okay, great, well, thank you, thanks, Member Karen, for pointing that out. So, Member Ward and Member Karen, Member Ward, are you okay with changing, taking out the date range and just saying April vacation?
Most, most definitely, and I'm okay without the April vacation, I mean, yep.
Okay, okay, great, so we'll just say April vacation. I think it's helpful to have something a little specific, so that seems to satisfy every need. I think it's great, thank you so much for doing this. I just love having these opportunities for our students, and I know that there is effort made to make this accessible to as many students as possible, so I really appreciate that too, and I very much support our students having this opportunity, so thanks a lot. Any additional comments, questions? Yes, Member Hollins?
I have two quick questions. One, if it weren't for the cost of the trip, how many students that take Spanish would want to go?
Probably very many.
And do we, I know one of our guidelines is to try and include deserving students that couldn't afford it personally, do we still do that?
We do, yes.
And my last question has to do with chaperone costs, we have two chaperones? Good. And the cost per chaperone's about $3,000, and that's included for stu, the students cover that?
Not, not with this number of students, so there will be some costs that will be absorbed by, by the chaperones.
Thank you.
Member Johnson, did you have any questions about the, the field trip?
No, thanks for asking.
Okay. Are we ready to vote on this, everybody? Okay, Member Ekstrom, can we have a roll call, please?
We can. Mayor Martin? Member Hollins, sorry. Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Nunes?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes!
And Member Ekstrom, we are unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too.
Okay, so we will go ahead and reset back to our approval of draft minutes. So in our packet tonight, we have, I think just one set of minutes, right? Perfect. We have draft minutes from Monday, October 21st to 2019, this was a rescheduled meeting from October 9th. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Moved by Member Hollins?
Second.
Second by Member Ekstrom, is there any comment? Member Hollins?
On page two, at the top, item five, Green River School not used, new heating council must approve cost for new heating system, it says $60,000, I think I said $600,000? I was estimating it. And the second tiny one is on page three, Hollins moved an additional $400,000, the next sentence, be balances in the school district revolving funds with an S. Thank you.
On what page is that, sorry? Page three?
Page three. Be balances in the school district revolving funds, plural.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Mayor Martin?
On page three of four, the reference on the motion on the FY '20 budget states Then there's a clarification that states $19 million is local funds, I think that would be, the $19,301,080 is, is the actual local funds.
Yeah, so you like to put the, the full value, rather than $19 million?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments about the minutes? Everyone okay with these changes? Glenn, are you okay with these changes?
Yes.
Okay, and let's have a roll call to accept the minutes into the record. No problem.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes!
Member Karen stepped out for her illness, so we still have a rule.
Okay, great, thank you. Motion passes. Okay, committee reports, chairperson report. So, I added into the packet, kind of a last-minute addition, something for, a little pleasure reading for you all about bullying. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. I think it's important for the committee now, and the committee moving forward, to be thinking about how we engage with one another, and so, I've added this in here for us to consider. As well, I, this evening, as I was preparing for the meeting, I recalled that Member Hollins had requested some, we have a school committee calendar, I will include that in tomorrow's packet, so we have a meeting on Monday, yeah, no problem. And I forgot to say, congratulations to those who were elected to the committee, and congratulations to those who will be continuing on, and many thanks to our clerk's office for managing our... And many thanks to our clerk's office for managing our election. It feels like a distant memory now, as we have such busy schedules these days. So, thank you to all that went into that. And, yes, I see a couple of the newly-elected committee members here in the audience today. We're glad that you are paying attention to what's going on, and welcome aboard. One other item that I want us to consider, and I will, again, I'll add this to tomorrow's packet for Monday consideration, is whether or not we want to hold two meetings in December. This is just something that I'd like you to think about. I think there is a possibility to manage all of our business in one fairly long meeting in December. As well, our meeting on Monday is scheduled at 5:00 PM, and I would like the committee to consider right now to actually scheduling our meeting at 6:00 PM instead. Is that something that people are able to do? The reason is because I want to be sure that members of the public are able to come to the meeting and participate in public comment if need be, and just ensure that folks have a chance to get something to eat before we start our meeting. So, what are your thoughts on that? In general, you guys? Monday?
Okay.
Okay, cool. So, let's, um, let's make it formal. I'll just move to start our meeting on Monday at 6:00 PM. The location is still to be determined, so please keep a lookout for that. We'll have to iron that out before tomorrow's packets go out. So, is there a second to support that motion?
Second.
Second by Member Hollins. Okay, a quick roll call, please, Member Exstrom.
Member Martin, Mayor Martin, sorry.
Yes.
Okay.
Member Ward?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Nunes?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Thank you.
That is all I have for now. Keep a lookout for tomorrow. I'll yield to the superintendent.
Thank you. I'll echo the congratulations to newly-elected members and to those that are continuing on, and a word of thanks to those of you that have served over these past many years. In your packet, you have some materials related to the superintendent's report, which begin with a grant announcement. This is put out in a press release by UMass Amherst, and we have been working for about a year now in collaboration with our partners in higher ed, including UMass, to establish a regional writing center. And we were awarded a $15,000 grant for the establishment of a regional writing center, and Greenfield High School will be part of that. This is a planning grant that would look to establish it at Greenfield High School, and is a really exciting opportunity. In addition, we have been continuing our work with GCC, and there was, in fact, a meeting today off-site, a sort of joint venture between GCC and the Collaborative, and some of us from Greenfield Public Schools, looking at ongoing opportunities. We had a job fair, the Veterans Job Fair at GCC. Greenfield Public Schools was represented by Matt Holloway and Jake Toomey, and we, you can see here, some of the positions that we're advertising and hiring for and looking actively to recruit. You heard in public comment earlier tonight about unfilled positions, and we are actively seeking people to fill the positions that the school committee has approved. We've run ads in the Athol paper, the Greenfield Recorder, the Gazette. We generally run a Wednesday, Saturday advertising campaign. We've done that for the last two weeks. We have that set to continue running, and we're really trying to drive people to those employment opportunities, because where we do have approved vacancies, we want to make sure that qualified people are in front of our students.
What exactly is a writing center?
So, this is meant to be sort of a community writing center, so it helps the skills of people that are writing. So, you can think of like a tutoring center where somebody could come and get something polished up, but also more broadly, so members of the community could potentially access it, a way to really develop your literacy skills, and to have students sort of tutor one another, so they have an opportunity. Speaking personally, my experience with writing centers was really profound in that when I was dual-enrolled as a student at Greenfield Community College while I was in high school, I was invited to work in the Learning Center, where I participated in a similar center, and it's where I realized, boy, I love teaching. And so, it, it would really be a good stepping stone for students that are ready to take that next step, as, as well as a way to support students that need more help.
Thank you.
And over the course of the next year, we would shape exactly what it would look like in Greenfield, because of the planning grant will help us determine exactly what our needs are here that would be best supported. And then that would be supported with Title I funds, and we've identified some additional Title I literacy staffing that we are looking to put in the Greenfield High School library to continue to sustain it. You also have several local media articles highlighting in part the girls' hockey team, the soccer team, which we've talked about at length tonight, and then a recap of the new health curriculum that was approved by this committee that was recently launched in the schools. Parents at the middle school and high school should have received notification that these were coming up and an opportunity to opt out, as, along with additional information about where they could find out more and how to talk to their child's teacher if they had any questions. You always receive some of the local media and district events by way of the social media, and then that's followed by the school newsletters. Schools are really doing a great job with communication. A recent situation at the high school was shared with the parent community, as well as with the school committee, and that's just one example of how timely communication has really been a goal of our schools, and working with me to try to get information out to the community, so that there's information and not an absence of that, which leads to concerns or questions when there's a vacuum and lack of information. So, we've been really working on that. We do have no school for the Thanksgiving break, so that's noted, and I do want to thank everyone that participated in the Veterans Day Parade, and of course, our veterans, as we were closed in observance of Veterans Day this past Monday. If there are any other questions, I'll take those. Otherwise, I will turn it back over.
Mayor Martin?
Yeah, Superintendent, on the, that Writing Learning Center, the, is that, if there's $15,000 for Athol and Greenfield, does Greenfield get $7,500? Is that how it might go?
It's a collaborative effort, so it's, I think it's based on the number of representatives and actual hours, like a timesheets of people that are actually working hours on the grant. So, but it is a regional grant, that $1,500 doesn't entirely go to Greenfield. It is shared.
And so, the money would go to someone who's working in the Learning Center or the Writing Center?
Well, it's a planning grant, so they're working to establish it, so they're not going to be, it will be up and running hopefully next year, but they're working on the grant this year.
All right. And could it, is it going to be dedicated for gifted and talented, or to, to bring people, or students, rather, to different levels of reading and comprehension?
My understanding is that it's both, so that a student, in my work previously, I, for example, in a capacity of a Writing Center, you could be working with a teacher or a, somebody working on a high level of research that needs a second pair of eyes, and so you're actually serving at a very high level in that type of Writing Center, as opposed to providing remedial support to somebody. So, it really could look like a lot of things. Again, we're still in the early stages, so we're going to be defining that over the course of this year.
Thank you.
Can I say a hand over here? I just want to say thanks for all the information about what's happening in our schools. I always love getting that information every month, and I appreciate our principals working hard to, you know, always, every day, better communication with our families. So, thank you for that. And I'm curious, was there any, is there anything that we didn't know about anything related to the election? Do we get, were we free of any damage to the floor in the gym?
I can't say we're free of damage, but I've not received any significant damage reports.
Okay.
We did, you know, we had a lot of help, and I think everybody did a good job, and the weather was pretty good.
Super.
So, I don't think there was any significant damage, and I was glad we were able to help out the city with that.
Yeah, and I saw some student volunteers, I believe, that were welcoming folks in, and that was really great. So, thanks to those student volunteers. Any additional comments or questions for the superintendent? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to subcommittees. We will have some updates on negotiations in executive session. I do not believe that policy nor health and safety have met. Do we have planning and construction? We did receive via email, thank you, Member Hollins, the annual report. I don't think that that landed in the packet, so we can add that into the packet for tomorrow, just for people to have as information. Member Hollins, did you want to mention anything about planning and construction?
Yes, I will. We, we did meet on October 15th. There's a long discussion about the library, which is now passed, but at that meeting, there was a motion to affirm the Planning and Construction Committee consensus opinion that the new library was more fiscally responsible than investing in upgrades to the current library. I think I had reported on that. There's some discussion about who was going to do minutes in the future. Their minute taker has moved to a different position. There's a long discussion by Carol Collins, who's the Energy and Sustainability Director at the city about energy projects, and in her report, she talked about the heating at Greenfield. But I have in my notes is that the current estimate for mini splits in Greenfield School, I'm sorry, Green River School, was the last bid $765,000, and in addition, that's an old bid, that there may have to be a new bid, but in addition, the building only has a 200-amp electric service, so there, in addition to the cost of the mini splits, would need an electrical upgrade. And the thought about that is that, in addition, there has to be about a 20% contingency, and there was a motion, from which I abstained, to urge the school committee to develop a plan for Green River School, because the information that came to the committee was, it was unlikely that the city would invest that level of money in a building that isn't being used without a plan to use it. And there was a timeline, which I'm not clear about, but they had to have, there's a timeline for when the city council can vote on these things, but after some discussion, if there is a plan that goes forward, there seems to be some way I might be able to work around that. There was discussion about capital budget process this year, the timeline, and a thought from Carol Collins, it would be really helpful in the future for all city buildings, that there would be engineering studies that were done before the day that you need to add an addition or a roof or something, so you could just pull it out. We talked about how long a study would be current, but that that might be a useful expense for the city, and then we adjourned.
Thanks, Member Hollins. I have a couple of clarifying questions. The first is, did I hear you say that you put forward a motion related to the Green River School building, but then you abstained?
I didn't put forward the motion. I abstained from it because it was a motion to direct the school committee to come up with a plan.
So, and then I also want to clarify some of the numbers that were listed. I recently was reviewing information from Ms. Liz Gilman from the mayor's office, related to estimates and the financial order put forward by the mayor. Could you please repeat the numbers that you have that you were discussing, planning and construction?
These are not the minutes of the meeting. These are my notes, so let me go find them again. Just closed it out.
And, um...
What, what number do you want?
I, I believe that I heard you say, quote, some numbers related to
Yes.
Heating units at the Green River School building, and those don't align with the information that I received, and I want to, I wanted to clarify what you stated.
Again, these are from my notes, which, there was a long discussion about, I think I, about what needs to happen for us to get a heating system in the building, and my notes say that there need to be nine favorable votes from the city council. The capital has to be in place by November. There might be a way to move it forward. The current estimate, again, this, this is just my notes, the current estimate was $765,000 for mini splits, but there would also need to be an upgrade to the electrical service. And then there's another comment that they're working on, putting solar on the high school roof, I think, which also needed an upgrade, and the cost for that was about, working solar, putting on the Green River roof. And then there was another estimate for about $460,000 with a 20% contingency. The bids were not current, though, so they would likely have to be rebid.
Okay. So, I want to actually caution us against, you know, having these discussions on information that might not actually be accurate, and I, I would, you know, open the floor to the mayor to clarify if he wants to right now, but if not, we can hold this. I also just want to point out that there is a plan, there was a plan for the Green River School building. This committee voted on it. And then, this committee also made amendments to the budget, and that included pausing on the Green River School building plan. Also, so we've been touching on Green River School, and we have it on as an update here on the agenda today. We've been touching on this throughout and had a bit of a dialogue with the council. The council has pushed back on voting in favor of this financial order put forward by the mayor, and it, they have asked for information about the Green River School plan, and I want the committee to be very clear that it's, it's, the school committee's responsibility to be planning programming, to be putting into our buildings, and we did put forward a plan, and thus far, that plan hasn't changed. So, the idea that there isn't a plan is not entirely accurate. And then, I also just want to say that I have had, been in dialogue with the mayor's office related to specifics around the Green River School financial order, also including President Reno to just make sure that the council is updated on any action of the school committee. At this time, I have told President Reno that I did not anticipate any new information related to the Green River School building coming to the council prior to our December meeting. As I mentioned before, there, it is here as an update, so I appreciate it coming up in general. I think the superintendent wanted to say something. Did you have any, did you have your hand up just a second ago? If not, that's fine. I just thought I saw your hand.
No, I had two clarifying questions about the report. The first was just that, we had some exchange about the availability of minutes, and I did receive a reply from Member Elect Wall, I believe is the correct way to refer to the elected school committee members. And I had a question about the installation of solar roofs at Green River. I think this is the first I'm hearing that there may be an installation on the roof at Green River. I'm wondering if that has gone before the council for approval, and if so, if that project is moving forward without a specific program at Green River, or if that is also on hold until the council reviews the current plan from the school committee.
Member Hollins?
I don't know the answer to your question, but my position at planning and construction, every time panels on the roof come up, is that the school buildings are under the jurisdiction of the school committee, and any change to the buildings, it really needs, the proposal needs to come to the school committee. I believe that's accurate, and that's what I say every time. I mean, it's, they're public buildings, and the city's managing has some joint role, but I believe the statute, when we updated our policy, that ultimately, the school committee oversees buildings and grounds, and things shouldn't happen to the buildings unless the school committees advise. And because that's my position, that's why Carol Collins met with you and went over those plans.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions for... Any other comments, questions for Member Hollins, related to planning and construction? Yes, Member?
As I said, I'm just reading from my own notes. These aren't official minutes, and I've closed it out again. I don't know. Wait. The notes that I had, which aren't official minutes, was an estimate on mini splits of $765,000.
For the mini splits? Is that you, okay. Mayor Martin, did you want to, you have your hand up?
Yes. I believe, I believe there were, at the last three city council meetings, both you and the superintendent were asked questions by the councilors regarding the Green River building. And I think the, did someone request some information about the minutes of those? And Liz had sent them out to the superintendent and yourself.
Yes, I actually, I sent out an email letting President Reno know that I did not anticipate any new information coming to the council for the November meeting, because that had previously been expressed to the council that there may be new information to the council at the November meeting. And so, I just wanted to let her know. And then, I also did want to collect all of the relevant information to ensure that we had up-to-date information. And Liz provided several documents related to the financial orders.
Yeah, I'll try to clarify some of the other questions that were asked. I think the superintendent asked about the solar on the roof. I'm not certain, but Greenfield is entering into a contract for solar roofs, solar panels on municipal buildings. I'm not sure Green River's included, but there are a couple of school buildings that are included. And again, Carol Collins has, as in the past, relayed that to us. I'd have to check the minutes, but there's been authorization to do so. The roofs have been inspected, and the solar panels designed. So, the council, in about three months, will address the process by which these people put the panels up for no cost to the town, and the buildings use the electricity on-site. So, there is a lease, a long-term lease agreement, that the council will review and approve.
Thank you. That's helpful. We did have discussion in the past related to that, and we should check the minutes and make sure that all, everything's covered.
I believe the discussion was the high school, which was built solar-ready. And then, potential expansion to Federal Street, with the clear understanding that it would come back before this committee if it was going to expand to Federal Street. So, it might be helpful to have a copy of a MOU or a lease that discusses long-term use of the school buildings and any obligations of the school to maintain, if there are any or none. It'd be helpful information.
So, why didn't the chair or the superintendent get in touch with Carol? She has the, she's the source for all the information. She can pass on that lease proposal that's, I think, completed and will be brought to the council, as I said, in a couple of months.
We can definitely get in touch with Carol and make sure that everything is taken care of. Member Hollins, I see your hand.
I was just going to make one other comment about the Green River School. I remember that we approved a proposal, I think it was for 10 or 12 students, an alternative program. I don't remember exactly. And then, I think, because there wasn't heat, we weren't going to keep that money in the budget. I don't remember that exactly. But the point I want to make is, going forward, we, whatever we need to do to smooth out our relationship with the city, we should make that a priority, because regardless of the specific dollar amount, it's a really big investment to put heating in this building. It's a wonderful building. Our enrollment seems to be going up. We're holding steady. And we should bring back the plan and somehow work out something with the city so we can get heat in this building and use it, because it deteriorates. So, I think just, you know, getting into whodunit and who said it. We just need to have a better working relationship with the city. We need to get this building operational, and that's what I want to say.
Okay. Member Johnson, did you have any comments or questions at this point? That we are essentially on planning and construction-related items, but we blended in a bit to Green River School.
No questions. Thank you.
He said, "no questions." Okay, so, we will move on to the collaborative for educational services?
Collaborative is meaning as we speak. There is nothing to report upon.
All right. Thank you. Super. So, let's jump right into substitute pay rates. You have in your packet some information about substitute pay. Superintendent, if you want to walk us through when you're ready?
I'll ask Steve to come forward, so he's available, as it relates to the budgetary impact. You've heard discussion about this in a number of meetings, including our last meeting, where I told you that this would be coming before you, and I would be seeking your approval, as of last month, for a wage adjustment for substitute teachers and substitute paras. Our substitute fill rate, which in common terms means, if you put in for a sub, how often do you get one? At best, it's half, at best. But if you're looking at paraprofessionals, it's 1 in 4, or 25%. And there's a lot of heads shaking in the audience. That's on a good day. And so, that's, you know, one person's out. There's a 1 in 4 chance that you get somebody. You get a couple of people out in the building, and anybody knows. That's, it really adds up quickly to safety concerns for our youngest people. And to say nothing of quality of instruction on those days, when you have multiple absences. And there are good reasons for multiple absences. Some are the common illnesses or serious illnesses, and others are professional development and things that we want educators to take advantage of. Included in your packet, right in the front, is area subrates. And so, some area schools are sort of in line with where we are. But what you're seeing is, the most recent rates that have been set regionally are up to $100 a day, and that's in neighboring Gilmonagu. And that just happened in the last couple of weeks. And that's for both licensed and unlicensed substitute teachers. We have a unique challenge in Greenfield, which is that we have expanded learning time schools, where you're working a 90-minute longer day. And we do need staff for those, the entire school day. And so, we need to be able to not just attract people, but attract them to the schools with an even longer day, where we're asking people to work more. So, we are proposing a significant increase, and those rates are on the last page. Our para subs are currently working at $11 an hour. And we're proposing that the sub paras are up to $13 an hour. And we're looking at a teacher, daily teacher subrate of $100 per day with a four-year degree, $95 a day with a high school degree. And we're trying to add a category that recognizes that we have a lot of retired teachers that would actually like to come back and sub, and that they know our students in our district. And so, if you're a retired teacher or you're a certified teacher, we're recommending that we pay them $105 a day. Just a simple way to acknowledge their expertise. And $125 for our expanded learning time schools. So, those are our recommendations. We think they're in line with area rates and the clear difficulty that other districts are having attracting good people, and the fact that we need to maintain safety for our students and staff first, and quality of instruction second.
Okay. I saw Mayor Martin, and then I saw Member Karen.
Thank you. You said, "we recommended it." Is this a task force? Or is it a direct recommendation from the superintendent?
This memo is written by Steve. I've reviewed it with him. I've also met with all the principals on it. And I think you've heard considerable public comment on it. So, when I said "we," I meant the administration has made this recommendation, and I support it. And I'm asking the committee to vote favorably on it tonight.
And you also stated that Gilmonagu increased their rates two weeks ago? To 100? I can't find it. Oh, Turnis Falls. Okay. To 100. So, they are, they're the only school that has done that?
They're the most recent district to make that adjustment, yes.
Is there another district that has made that adjustment?
Well, you can see Pathfinder offers $100 for a licensed teacher, and that's been in place for quite some time. My understanding from the sort of chatter is that there are other districts that are considering this move, given the difficulty that all kinds of districts are having. But these are as current information as we could get in the last month, as we brought this information to you.
When we discussed this about three or four years ago, and we increased the rate, we also discussed what were the issues? What is causing this? We're looking for some type of impact of what's causing the critical need for substitutes. So, apparently, there was a study done on, I think at the time, we're talking teacher substitutes. It was a crisis brought forward by Jack, the union leader.
Tom.
Tom. No, not, yeah, Tom. You're right, exactly. Tom Avakwa. And so, what we're seeing here is quite an increase, a large increase in the number of subs needed. So, on your chart, on FY '16 versus FY '19, it looks like there's over a 50% increase in the number of subs needed, because of, that's also the number of absences that are occurring within the school system. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly? That's my first question. My second question would be, what is, what are the opportunities to see what other impacts? So, what we're presented with is this issue, and the solution is to raise it to 100 or $105 a day. And we, it's, is money the answer to this? Is it the administration is not finding a solution to the problem? Is the school committee charged with taking more money to fill this void and to take care of the deficiency in the hiring process, the marketing process, the whole orienting process for bringing new people into the system to work these jobs?
Could you repeat again about the deficiency? Because I think what we're seeing is, we have no staff in our schools with children. And I think we have a, and I would be very open to any suggestions that this committee has to staff our schools tomorrow. I'm concerned about student safety. I get, people approach me every day and say, "I'm not sure that I can keep working here, because five of my colleagues are out, and I can't do five people's jobs." I have students who are not meeting their IEP mandated services, because I can't put a person in front of them. Maybe the deficiency is in my advertising, Mr. Mayor, but perhaps we just need to pay people the same wage that they can get at Burger King to come and substitute, because it's a challenge.
And I can't disagree with you, but I would say also that we need to look at all the avenues that would take care of this problem. If the same problem pops up every three years, then we have an issue on how we're marketing, hiring, training, certifying, and so on, creating a position.
That may be, and it's worth looking at all the issues, but we haven't adjusted our rates in those three years either, whereas Burger King has. And I do think that, in addition to looking at the other issues, I mean, this is, this is just gross data. This is not a percentage of absences. We don't have a rash of absences with 50% more people out. But anecdotally, we are seeing more stress, more burnout, and more turnover. And that is not good for anybody's health. So, you know, I think what we're proposing is not an extreme solution. I think it's a modest step. And essentially, what we're proposing is to use the existing, currently budgeted line, which we're not actually expending, because we can't get anybody in. So, this money is sitting there, and it's not being used, because we can't find anybody to pay it to. So, we're saying, let's see how we do with paying a little bit more. I mean, honestly, you make better money just babysitting, so it's not significantly better. But I think that it will encourage people who know Greenfield, who like the kids here, who have neighbors, colleagues that work here, to say, "Okay, great. Let me give it a try." And then, when we get people in, they tend to like working in our schools, because they're good schools. But we need to get people in the door.
So, we've had this discussion almost verbatim three years ago. And several of the solutions brought forward was to work with the, to raise the level of the paraprofessionals and the one-on-ones that are in the IEPs to a level that they can be certified, and then provide that type of information, or rather, type of wage and salary that would go along with that. I don't see that we've made any advancement during those past three years. If we have, it, again, hasn't come before the school committee.
I'm sorry that you've not seen any advancement in the last three years, Mayor.
Advancement in that solution to move the IAs or the paraprofessionals to a certified level, where they can be receiving a different tier of wage-based pay.
Okay, Bill, we're actually entering into negotiation territory and getting way off course here. I'm not going to entertain any more back and forth on this right now. Katie, had your hand up. Thank you for waiting. And then, I see Member Hollins, and then, we'll keep going.
I have a really quick question. The estimated cost increase, is that based on current fill rates, or what you're hoping would happen?
It's a slightly higher fill rate.
Thank you.
And Member Hollins?
I have two comments, and then, three suggestions. My first comment is, I support an adjustment. We need to have subs in our schools. Second is, on the list of what other districts in the area are paying, all of the districts that surround us are paying about 85 a day, similar to what Greenfield's paying. So, we just have to know, when we vote this, we're going to force, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, but all the other districts that are struggling are going to have to raise their rates. That's going to be a reality. And the superintendent said she would like suggestions, so I have three. I don't remember how many years ago, I think it was about four, that we switched from having a caller who had a relationship with our subs to a program where you would look in and see what everybody's advertising. I forgot the name of it, Aesop or Einstein or something. But I think we should reconsider having a caller who makes a relationship with the people who sub with us. That's one suggestion. Secondly, I just finished a course on education finance policy, and there was a situation where they were talking about this very same thing. And what the administration had done is, they had the school committee, they put three days in every central office employee's schedule for substituting in the schools. And what they found is that when people from the central office were going in to sub in schools, their need for substitutes went down considerably. And I thought it was interesting. And third, I think a loyalty program, where if you work here for 10 days, then your salary goes up, and if you work here another 10 days, your salary goes up again, is a way of acknowledging people that we like, that work for us, and to reward them, as opposed to just a flat rate adjustment every day. But I support a change, and those are my three suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are being looked at, and I appreciate them.
Member Johnson, did you have any input?
I'll just say that I think that we have to, I guess we, I think my comment is essentially that we have to, we can't stigmatize people for making choices based on economics. In other words, when people are working, they're exchanging their work, their time, for money. And if they can, I guess what we're seeing here is a decline in the number of people willing to come and work at the rates we're offering. And other, one other district offering an increase in compensation for people doing the same work. So, I guess I just would like to point out that this is essentially a situation where people have to make decisions based on what's best for them and their families, and not on some kind of basis of altruism. People aren't expected to come and work in our school district based on just wanting to be good for our budget, or wanting to be good, just wanting to volunteer. They're here as workers, and they should be paid and compensated at a level that's respectable. And unfortunately, our budget doesn't allow us to really pay people what they're worth. I think we, I think many of us agree with that. But making some attempts to try to... But making some attempts to try to, so you can see in these charts, people are making choices, and there may be other solutions as well. But I think that compensation would be a pretty obvious place for us to make an attempt to fix a problem which is impacting negatively the student outcomes and making our teachers and administrators very uncomfortable with the situations they're being put in and that the students are being put in as a result of the lack of coverage.
Thank you. And I think I saw Member Warren.
I'll start with a couple of things. First, I believe we've shown the money to pay for this. Is that correct? The money is there? It needs to be used. We can't get the subs. We have the money to pay them, okay? I believe that these people should get paid more money. I believe that most of our people deserve more money. Given that we have a way to pay for this, I would support it. However, I'm not a hundred percent sure. And I would support it reluctantly, to be honest with you, because of where we're at with some other people that we should be paying more money to. But because this has got money earmarked for it, I think we can go ahead. I can vote for it. But I don't think it's going to, I don't think that's to solve the problem. And I'm going to ask a couple of questions. Do you have any fill rates for any of these other schools?
I don't have that information, yeah.
So what my concern is, is, correct me if I'm wrong, but the difference between FY sixteen and FY nineteen is about six hundred subs needed. So we needed substantially more subs in FY nineteen.
Yeah, but keep in mind that that reflects total teachers, too. So more students, more teachers, more positions, and therefore, more people that have contractual days that they might be second. No, no, please, I'm just trying to put it in context.
So what, I'm not necessarily suggesting that, I am suggesting that maybe there's a bigger problem there. And we have, maybe there are more teachers, but if you've got the same amount of subs, you're, whether they come in or not, you're still going to have a lower fill rate because you have greater absences. My question is, why are the greater absences? If the answer is more teachers, more students, more teachers, that's fine. But that's, are we talking sixty percent more students?
No.
Sixty percent more teachers? Because we're looking at sixty percent more subs. And even if you have the same sub field, whether they're accepting eighty-five dollars or not, or they're going somewhere else, you're automatically going to have a lower fill rate. Just because X went up, Y didn't change.
Exactly.
So you raise their rate fifteen dollars, as I'm going to vote for here today. I don't know is that's going to solve your problem.
I don't think it's the answer to everything. It's a start. And again, trying to do, the fill rate's very, very low. So that's a start in order to get to do that. When you look at the total number of absences, FY sixteen is kind of a weird year because there wasn't a lot of need that year. And then when you look at seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, it's fairly steady around seventeen hundred, sixteen hundred absences for the year. But what strikes you when you look at that, and you're exactly right, is that the fill rate on about sixteen, sixteen fifty absences dropped about twenty percent. So people aren't coming here to work. So how do you get people to come to work? You raise the pay, but then you have to do other things, too.
Or I'm suggesting you still have those people coming here to work, but because you have so many more absences, your fill rate can't do anything but drop.
Yeah, but the fill rate's been fairly level from seventeen, eighteen to nineteen. If you look at the bar graph there, on the next page, the big yellow line, that's the total need for the year, for seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. So it's been fairly steady, but we just can't get people in. So you see that blue line at the top? It kind of dips down. That's a tremendous dip in the ability to attract people.
I have a motion. My motion addresses the fact that there are still some issues being studied. Effective immediately and until the superintendent completes the current study of absenteeism and substitute personnel to adjust the substitute rate to one hundred dollars a day. The reason I worded it that way is there seem to be a lot of issues, but we need to adjust the rate. And I'd rather just make it the decision for today until we get better, more comprehensive information, and maybe it'll be a tiered rate or something else permanently.
So what's the motion?
That effective immediately, the rate would change to a hundred dollars a day, but until there's a, the superintendent completes the study of absenteeism, and maybe it will be presented with a different model.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my mayor Martin. Did you want to speak to that?
Yes. So I can support this motion if the superintendent and the business manager can declare that the funds available for this increase are available in this FY twenty budget and will not impact any other negotiations for collective bargaining agreements or expected expenses.
Yeah, this will come from a couple of sources. One is the sub line. The next is the lapsed salary line because some of these, these positions are unfilled. So there's a remaining balance in those. So, and then, you know, you look at the estimated total cost. We're almost halfway through the school year, so it's about half that. So we can get there within the school budget.
You did mention at one time there were seven, I think, vacant positions funded? Am I mixing up groups?
Unfilled at that point, yeah.
Unfunded. I mean, unfilled but funded, exactly. Thank you.
Okay, so I cannot support the motion as stated because it doesn't actually take into account all of the other levels that are needed here. So one figure was stated, a hundred dollars. That doesn't address paras, it doesn't address teachers with different educational backgrounds, which are our current tiers. So I cannot support the motion as stated. I would, however, support a motion that would support what is put forward here by our administrators. And just in general, I agree with what folks have said today, that this is a start. This is just like, actually just puts us on the playing field. I mean, it's competitive out there. And there are a lot of options for people in this kind of wage range. And I think that I support all of the efforts that can be done to find additional substitute teachers. And, but we have to stay in the game here. I saw Member Ekstrom.
I just, I actually had a follow-up to Susan on the motion. So what would your expectation be with the, whatever the outcome is of the superintendent and Steve, I assume, looking at other factors related to the rates that people are paid? I mean, is it that, would you, and I'm asking purely from my own education, is it that you would expect that we would drop back to, I don't know, ninety, ninety-five, or that we would need to go higher, I guess?
I don't have an expectation. It's just that when we, what I remember from the last time we did this, there were six or seven different types of substitutes. It was like, what do you do if it's a half day? I don't remember it altogether. But it was a lot of discussion. And when I said earlier, might there be a program where the rate changes and it goes up based on loyalty to the district? Or the superintendent said they were looking at it. She mentioned they were looking at a couple of things. So my thought was, I'm sorry, I missed the para rate. I didn't mean to. Put this into place immediately, but don't end the discussion. So my expectation would be at some time, these things that are being looked at, because it definitely connects with absenteeism, would come back and say, this, we can't find any better way of doing this. We want to make this permanent. Or we really have looked at the tiered system of loyalty, and we think that would be better, or something. And that all these things would be finalized, and we'd have, that was my thought.
So similar to what Adrian had said? Similar to what Adrian had just said? Is that because there are such different tiers and?
Yeah, there's other situation factors. But to support these rate changes immediately until there's a different recommendation, not make it permanent, but situational.
Thank you.
Does she want to speak? Any additional discussion? Okay, could you read back the motion to us, please, Susan Farber?
To adjust the substitute rate to a hundred dollars a day, effective immediately, and until the superintendent can complete the current study of absenteeism.
Does she want to speak?
There is no current study of absenteeism. We have no adequate substitutes. You mentioned three suggestions. I could, you've talked many times about continuing the dialogue, but nobody is asking what our initiatives are, or what has been tried, or how many people are out there begging their friends, their mothers, their sibling to come in and substitute in our school. We're looking at the idea of reinstating a subcaller, which would be a paid position, which might well fit into Unit C. But we haven't ratified that contract, so I can't comment on that at this time. You suggested a volunteering in the schools program. We ran a pilot of that last year. We found that we had too much turnover in central office, and they were too occupied with school committee tasks and other central office work to actually give up their time to go into the schools. So we are considering it. However, I don't think it's a valid way to curb the crisis because we just don't have enough people in central office, and none of them are certified teachers. And the third is the idea of a salary step-up program, which we do. And we think it's a great way of recognizing people that are long-term subs, not at these daily rates. And what we're addressing here tonight are daily rates. So I'm just happy to let you know that we are exploring some of those ideas, but they're separate from the idea of we need to address the substitute rate, which is what we're here to talk about tonight.
That's what I recommended, supporting your substitute rate. And you've said again, you're exploring other ideas. And my motion was to immediately put these rates into effect until you come back.
That actually isn't the motion. The motion was a hundred dollars a day. So there is a motion on the table. I'd like us, I think it's time to vote on the motion on the table. Susan Farber, for the record, if you could please read the motion back to us.
To adjust the substitute rate to a hundred dollars a day, effective immediately, and until the superintendent can complete the current study of absenteeism.
Okay, and Member Ekstrom, if you could please call the roll.
Point of clarification?
Yes, Bill.
The one hundred dollars for a substitute per day, does that include paraprofessional and teacher?
I didn't see that it was the teacher substitute rate.
So it does not?
That isn't what I meant. It was, I meant to say the teacher substitute rate. If you'd like, I would.
Would you like to withdraw your motion?
I'd like to correct it to the teacher substitute rate.
Okay, would you like to withdraw your motion and then restate your motion?
And restate it.
That she said she wanted to, just for the record, her mic was off. She said she wanted to withdraw and restate.
To adjust, effective immediately, I'm sorry, to adjust the substitute rate to the superintendent's recommendation, which I believe is of a hundred dollars a day for teachers and thirteen dollars an hour for paras, paraprofessionals, effective immediately, and until the superintendent completes further review of absenteeism and substitute personnel.
Friendly amendment?
Yes, friendly amendment. Member Johnson?
I wonder if Member Hollins would consider accepting a friendly amendment just to say, to adjust the rates as proposed in the teacher subfill rate document that the superintendent distributed, just so there's no lack of clarity of what is being proposed.
I accept that, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to step in a little bit just to clarify.
Was there a second?
There was not a second. So that's also, member Karen is seconding? Okay. So what I'm hearing you say is that you would like to support the pay rates put forward today by the superintendent. And on top of that, could you, Susan Farber, repeat the language related to this additional work being requested of the superintendent?
And until the superintendent completes further review of absenteeism and substitute personnel.
Okay. So that is moved by Member Hollins, seconded by Katie, Karen. Again, I want to support the rates. I would prefer to separate out, you know, if we're asking the superintendent to do an additional research project and to dive into this, I think this is something different that we need to be looking at as a whole and potentially be looking at other measures that we're asking the superintendent to be looking into at the same time and see what we prioritize. I obviously, I know that there's ongoing work by our administrators to review how we can better fill our substitutes. And so I just, I don't know. I think that this is kind of ambiguous. Is there, did I say hand?
I agree. I would prefer that the two were separated out. Because they're two different, they're two different things. Yes, they relate to each other, but they're two.
The superintendent has said twice she's looking into things. I'm just saying, this would be an adjustment until she's not looking into it anymore.
Superintendent?
Just to put an end to the conversation, if it puts anybody's mind at ease, as long as the rates are accepted, I'm willing to, I'm willing to accept the motion as it stands.
Member Warren?
How many teachers do we employ?
Okay, I think we're ready to vote. Oh, yep, sorry. And then did, I saw Steve, I saw Bill.
So the average teacher substitute pay in Massachusetts is a hundred and one dollars a day. That's the average. So certainly, it's a lot higher as close you get to Boston. It's a lot less the further away you get from Boston. If we compared it to ourselves, we have, we pay with the EOT program, that's a subsidy from the state, ninety-five dollars to a hundred dollars for the substitute teachers. So even comparing to ourselves, which is a subsidy by the state in the EOT program, moving it to a hundred is average, but the average is probably not the mean. So I'm thinking that though the price might be right, the process is, it's not the money. It's not the money that's going to solve this problem. It's something else. And we need to find out what that is, and so do a lot of the other schools. And apparently, nobody has found a solution yet.
Steve, did you have a comment?
Yeah, whatever you decide to do, just make it not retroactive because I don't want to track down people.
Oh, no, 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 no. Susan?
I think all the points made. It's a big issue. It's a lot of money. For me, the compelling issue is we don't have staff in our schools to supervise children. And if the superintendent thinks this is what's needed tomorrow to get staff in the schools, I support it. But I do recognize there are a lot of issues about substitutes. And I think there's an opportunity to come back with more information, maybe a stronger decision.
Let's vote. Did you have a new comment, or is it a repeat? Okay, I see Susan Farber. Please. Yes, please do. Okay.
Okay. Yes? Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Nunes?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
And Member Ekstrom? Yes?
Motion passes, thank you. Thank you, Steve. Okay, so just a quick update on the superintendent evaluation. We will have the superintendent evaluation on Monday. I needed a little bit more time to consolidate, and members needed a little bit more time to actually do their evaluations. There was only one member that actually turned in their evaluation on time. Thank you very much for that. So that will be happening on Monday, and the consolidated report will be in your packet. Yes, actually, yes, budget information.
Because when you asked about making the meeting a later start date, I had in my mind we were doing budget, and we really need to spend time on that. So if there's going to be a lot of time on superintendent eval, maybe you should keep the time we had.
I'll just quickly, between items, I meant to include this in my report for Monday. I'm looking at our regular budget reports, capital requests, superintendent evaluation, potentially policy depending, and then probably a quick executive session. Green River School, we did have conversation on that already. Are there any clarifying questions or anything like that related to Green River School? Okay. So that actually completes our public agenda. We do have some executive session business to cover this evening. So I entertain a motion to enter into executive session for reasons number three and 10 regarding Unit C, Unit A, Greenfield Middle School parking, and potential litigation. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Is there? We have other business on the agenda. Is that to be addressed after the executive session?
The other item? Is that what you're looking at? That was my intent. Is that okay? I had a motion by Member Johnson, is that correct? Member Johnson, did you move?
Yes.
Member Johnson moves the executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Member Ekstrom. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Martin?
Yes.
Member Warren?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Nunes?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Karen?
Yes.
And myself, we are unanimous.
Thank you. So let's take a five-minute recess and then meet in the small conference room. Thank you. And it's likely that we will return. So everyone, we've returned from executive session. It is now 10:44 PM. Are we good to go, GCTV? Thank you. Thank you to everyone who's waited. Thank you, GCTV. We do have a public motion to put forward. I'll ask Susan Farber to please read the motion to us. This was moved by Member Johnson.
Move that we ratify the Unit C contract as negotiated and direct the mayor to request full funding from city council, consistent with past practice.
Thank you. So that is moved by Member Johnson and seconded in by myself, Member Nunes. And can we please have a roll call vote?
Mayor Martin?
No.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Member Nunes?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
Member Ekstrom is yes. Yays, Carrie.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for your patience. I think have a good night, yes. And there's not much more to say. There's more in the process, of course. We do need to move to adjourn. Moved by Mayor Martin.
Second.
Any conversation?
Roll call?
No. We're all ready to go. Okay. Roll call, please.
Mayor Martin? Member Hollins?
Yes.
Nunes?
Yes.
Member Johnson?
Yes.
And myself, yes, we are unanimous and adjourned.
Thank you.